Yep.
Okay, welcome everyone. It's eight thirty. We'll bring the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? And if not, I could use a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilor Penner to move the agenda as presented. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Uh, we have the pre-circulated the minutes of the September twenty-fifth meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
I'll move the minutes as presented.
Okay, Councilor Christie has moved the minutes as presented. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. And we will move to six point one master rates bylaw. And anytime you're ready, Mike. I see you're thinking on the machine here.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and good morning to you and the members of council. Bylaw seventeen seventy-seven is the master rates bylaw. At September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, Committee of the Whole meeting, council directed administration to bring back the master rates bylaw at the regular council meeting to be held October ninth, two thousand and eighteen, to review some proposed rate changes for the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year, and so they can be implemented in the two thousand and nineteen interim operating budget. Thank you. Summary of changes as presented in front of you on the screen, and I'll try and go slowly so we can walk through them a little bit. Uh, the verbiages as suggested in the request for decision. The variable water consumption rate, and of course, it's on pages twenty-nine and thirty in your package. At the Committee of the Whole on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, council directed the following changes. One, one unified rate for all connections that receive county water. Two, the rate effective January first, nineteen be five dollars per cubic meter. With that, users will receive that rate up to a given amount of water to be determined. Leading into three, the XF excess of water use be determined over one hundred and meters cubed per billing period. There are approximately a hundred and five accounts of seven hundred and two that are hit, and that equates to about fifteen percent of the total populace that would, at some point during the year, hit that amount at a hundred cubes per billing period. And I should clarify, the billing period is bimonthly. The way we bill out our utilities is bimonthly, so that's the billing period that I'm referring to. So that's a hundred, we use the, the, the number a hundred cubes for that amount. And the excess rate over and above will be nine dollars per cubic meter over and above the hundred meter uh, per billing period. Four, the bulk water rate would be five dollars per cubic meter up to fifty per cubic meters monthly. So the way we do bulk water is monthly billings, unlike the utility accounts which are bimonthly. So I wanted to make that, that clear distinction. With excess over fifty cubic meters monthly at nine dollars per cubic meter. So the, the tiering system would work the same with a minimum of ten dollar charge. There will be approximately a hundred and fifty-nine bills, twenty-two percent that would exceed the bulk water, the hundred cubic meter amount. All of these increased fees are to move the county towards full cost recovery of operating costs. And if those scenarios held true, we would look at approximately ninety, ninety-one percent of total operating costs recovered. And currently, we're around forty-five percent. The additional information will supply council with. The Committee of the Whole held April seventeenth, eighteen, council also made a recommendation to increase all water service areas to one rate, three fifty per cubic meter. Uh, increased rate for bulk water for commercial industry accounts, and that's right from the, from the, uh, from the recommendation at that committee of the whole. Number two, that's on page twenty-nine as well. At the Committee of the Whole on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, council directed the charge to be increased, the rise of fee charge to be increased at ten thousand dollars. Administration also recommended that the improved increase for additional rural water, so that's that supplementary water volume would be added, that's currently at six thousand, be increased to ten thousand to mirror the increase to rise of fees. That wasn't discussed at the Committee of the Whole, but it makes sense, and that's why I thought that we would bring that to council as well. Number three, the other water and service charges, and you'll see a few of them on page twenty-nine in your package as well. These are more administration charges. Administration recommends an increase to thirty dollars for fees for reconnection and disconnection charges, as well as a new administration fee for transferring utility charges to taxes where applicable. This rate has been the same for several years. In addition, there's been some description changes included to better reflect the charge indicated. So we're, it's administrative fees. It's basically to cover off the last several years when the, since the twenty-five dollars has been in effect from. Number four, Hamlet residential garbage pickup. It's before you, in front of you on page thirty. At the Committee of the Whole on April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, council directed to twenty-five dollar fee be placed on each utility account to make it that be in the, that's particular service cost recovery. This fee would be applied for residents of the following hamlets, Hoxley, Swalwell, Torrington, Wimbourn, and Sunny Slope. Herbicide and insecticide handguns, as well as forage probe, no longer available, so should be removed. The rates have been reviewed by the Ag Services Board. The recommendation from the ASB October fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting was to increase the rental rate of the no-till drill. And there is a typo on that particular item. It should read twenty dollars per acre, and that will be the noted should council reflect that, because I believe that was the correct recommendation of the day to a four-hundred day minimum due to the increased cost of replacement. So talking about a significant capital cost. So I wanted to draw that attention to council. Next item, Parks and Cemeteries, page eighteen. The manager of this department has recommended the following changes. Firewood to ten dollars a bundle, currently at five dollars a bundle. The commemorative bench to two thousand dollars from fifteen hundred. And residential property owner, former residential cemetery plots to five hundred from three fifty. In all cases, the changes are to set fees that better recover the actual costs. Also, the tent group site fee at Keever's Lake is removed as it doesn't apply. It really applies to the, the big campers and so forth. It really applies to the big campers and so forth. Planning and development, number seven. There's some significant changes to planning and development fees and structures. At the Committee of the Whole on September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, council directed to the manager of planning that she bring forth, recommended changes to the master rates bylaw that better reflect cost recovery of the services provided, and they are summarized as follows. I'm not going to go through each of the items on the screen, although you'll see importantly in red that those are where the changes are reflected, and I'm just going to read as follows. On planning, outline plan twenty-five hundred was previously two thousand. Rural address sign, two hundred and fifty was previously ninety dollars. Certificate of compliance, that's all, was a hundred dollars. Previously seventy-five for residential and farm. Rezoning and redesignation, nine hundred was previously eight hundred. Rezoning, direct control, twelve hundred. Because the simply put, it's more work to prepare those documents. Road closure request, one thousand dollars was previously eight hundred, again, on the notion that it's reflect cost recovery. On the development side, we'll start with class one, that's the minor development, and that's in front of you on page twenty. In addition to buildings under five hundred square foot, no change at seventy-five dollars, but any permit over five hundred feet squared will be a hundred dollars. So we're looking at implementing a tier system, and that's sort of the theme, as you'll see in many of the other classes as well. Fences now forty dollars was twenty. Accessory buildings are now tiered from two hundred to five hundred square feet at fifty dollars. Over five hundred square feet is a hundred dollars, was seventy-five for all previous, so there was only one fee for that before. Minor home occupations now a hundred dollars, was seventy-five dollars. And alternative energy for non-residential classes now, new at one hundred dollars. Class two, residential, minor, commercial, and change in land use. So the major home occupations now two hundred dollars was one hundred and fifty dollars. Single-family discretionary use now two hundred and fifty dollars was two hundred dollars. And telecommunications towers, single wind turbines, kennels, move from class three now until class two, does the same price, and unlisted similar use at two hundred dollars, and that's new. Class three, institutional, commercial, and light industrial. So we're looking at chemical storage, fertilizer blending plants, and grain elevators eliminated from own separate class and fall into general. Unlisted similar use, tier class under these parameters based on construction costs. So this is what will drive the fee for these classes, this particular class going forward. So less than five hundred thousand dollars would be a five hundred dollar fee. Five hundred thousand to two million dollars will be a one thousand dollar fee. Two million to five million dollars, two thousand dollar fee. And five million plus will be four thousand dollars. Class four, major commercial industrial recreation. General unlisted similar use class created with the tier in mind as well, based on the dollar figures of construction. Less than five hundred thousand equals five hundred. Five hundred thousand to two million equals fifteen hundred. Two million to five million, twenty-five hundred. Five million plus would be five thousand dollars. In addition, a new solar farm class created, which would be five hundred dollars plus fifty dollars per acre. And that's pretty, that's been common with some of the other neighboring municipalities. I should preface this by saying a lot of these have been pulled from other comparatives as well and shared with you in the previous committees of the whole, so should be fairly familiar with looking at some of these fee structures with, this shouldn't be too, should be fairly familiar to you. Class five is the Horseshoe Canyon Van Der permits reduced to better reflect the economics. Food from twelve fifty was fifteen hundreds, and non-food a thousand was twelve fifty. Lastly, class six are the exceptions. Separate mobile business licenses into two types, residential one hundred, non-residential two hundred. Was only one fee at one hundred and fifty dollars. And lastly, under additional new fees, two types were added. Development agreement preparation, five hundred dollars. An external engineering review, twenty-five dollars an acre to a maximum of five thousand On the safety code side, there was some significant cleanup in the previous bylaw reviews, and there wasn't anything significant to change, just a couple clarification points through pages twenty-five to twenty-eight to better define the fee structure as presented. So should all the recommended changes be put forth today? We're looking at additional approximately seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in The notification in various media of these changes and the update, the bylaw index will be the key communication. I would suggest there'll probably be a lot more than those simple items, but certainly there will be lots of notification go out to all of our residents. Would be effective January first, should that, should these changes be implemented and readings given today. Of course, the key, the key link to this strategic plan is the fiscal sustainability. And before you, as we sort of thumbnailled through the, through the bylaw, various areas, it's attached for your information. And then also, there was an attachment at the end of the utility and bulk water scenario so that the impact could be seen as far as what the change would be to, to the users and utility ratepayers of the county. That concludes the body of the request for decision.
Council have any questions?
There it goes. Sorry, Mr. Reeve. I guess I would like to bring us as council back to a discussion on the water rates, and I know we've had, we've had several discussions surrounding that. And I guess the question that I have, based on the April and September meetings that we had, just some clarification, and I'm looking to see if council is convinced that we want to go ahead with those changes on water rates. I know that I have a number of residents who are concerned in terms of the direction and in the speed of the movement, and so I'm wondering if there's maybe some openness or some conversation that's needed at this table to amend those rates before we go ahead with the master rates bylaw. So I guess I would be looking for some direction or a conversation with council regarding that. I'm thinking that perhaps we need some more time and we need some more conversation, not only with ourselves, but potentially with our ratepayers concerning the changes we're
Counselor Christie.
I'm comfortable with the decision in April. I'm not real comfortable with the decision we made two weeks ago. I like the idea of a single rate, but moving from three fifty to five and nine is pretty aggressive. The three fifty was, I think, a reasonable step for the first year to, to get it to a common rate and, and start to get to cost recovery, but to go to five and nine is pretty
Counselor Penner.
At that meeting, I was against it. I thought it was too, too big of a jump. I was in favor of the three fifty, and I'm in favor of a unified rate right across the county, but it's too big of a jump, like I voted against it at the time.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor King and Christie and Penner's assessment. I believe jumping to five per cube is excessive. I don't know what the recommended rate should be, but that is a council decision. For us to go back on this, I think is, this is the place to do it, and I agree that five is too much. Whether three fifty is the magic number, I don't know, but I could use some input from other people.
I'm very comfortable with going with the three fifty. I agree that it's pretty steep, especially for the people who are already at the lower rate, that it's, that's a pretty fast climb for those people that have the lower rate of water.
The, the three fifteen is what Aqua Seven people are paying right now. So they're going to go to three fifty, the same as all those wells are going to go to three fifty. That will be our standardized rate across the whole county.
Well, that decision hasn't been made, but it will be made if that's the way we want to go, so.
But that, that would apply to everybody who's using county services for water, eh?
The recommendation is to go to unified rate, all the same, but not, so far, not to five.
I guess, you know, I mean, going to three fifty isn't too bad for the people that are coming from three fifteen, but the well people are sure going to see an awful big jump, aren't they?
It's there now. I guess that's the concern I would have as well, and certainly that concern has been reflected to me through my ratepayers. It's, for them on a thirty cube billing cycle, so every two months, thirty cubes is about fifty-five, fifty-six dollars an account, and it's been reinforced to me fairly significantly that a lot of people that live in those hamlets are, seniors are on low income, and that's a significant ask on our part. So when you talk thirty-five cents as compared to a dollar eighty-something, that's significant difference from the one system to another. So whether we need more time to consider this or not, I don't know. Certainly, definitely, my feeling is that we need to do something different than what we are. And so I guess I'm going to propose an amendment to the master rates bylaw, and my amendment would be that we go back to the rates that were in two thousand and eighteen, and that we take the time to do some conversation with ratepayers, and that we look towards change going forward into two thousand and twenty budget year. So that would be my proposal, that we amend it back to the two thousand and eighteen rates, which would be the one sixty-four and the three fifteen, and certainly, for your discussion, anyway.
Is there any comments from council? We are at the mercy of our water suppliers for the two systems that we already hooked to, which is the Aqua Seven and the Three Hills Water, so those will generally come up in November when we get the rates from the towns for the new charges. So there will probably be a change in the master rates bylaw for the water to reflect the cost of the water coming in. That being said, is there any discussion from council on what you'd like to do with
I guess when I'm trying to be difficult with council, my microphone doesn't want to cooperate. Certainly, I am definitely open to conversation on this, and I think it's, it's reasonable that we as a council have a conversation around this. This is the place and the time to do it. So that's my proposal for an amendment, and certainly, I think it's council's completely within your capabilities to turn that amendment down, to, to change it to something different, but we need some place to begin this conversation, so there you have it.
Yes, Reeve Whitstock. I agree with Ken that it'd be nice to hold the water rates back, but if we are going to see an increase, I think if we took the, the hamlets, the Huxley and that, to two dollars per cube, and the rest of the water lines to three fifty, we'll still put an increase, but it's not so onerous of an increase that we're going to cause hardship on our ratepayers.
Counselor King.
Mr. Reeve, if it's council's wishes, I would consider that to be a friendly amendment to my previously.
Water is something we're going to have to look at coming forward, like there should, we should get closer to cost recovery, but I feel as a gradual increase to get to there. I'm happy with what Mr. Hugo has put forward.
Where all the systems were put in for residential use, we really do have to have a two-tiered pricing system, don't we? For the, anybody that goes above that residential usage amount, we've got to get a substantial rate on that one, I think.
Well, that's open for discussion here also. That's part of this variable water rate, so. You got a recommendation, Glenn, or is that where, where it sits, or?
Well, I don't know. The commercial side of it, I, I hear that there's more and more people, you know, I mean, thinking of going to a commercial side of water usage. So the residential person is subsidizing that individual for using that large amount of water, if he isn't going to pay a substantial amount over. for using that large amount of water if he isn't going to pay a substantial amount over.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Penner?
I would agree. There should be two for bulk as well as residential. Um, for accounting sake, I, I think if we eventually could get to a unified rate, one rate for the county would be much easier, any of the discussions we're having. Um, but at this point in time, I don't think that's going to be accomplished. Um, looking forward, um, it will be on the vision, but yes, there should be two. I agree with Mr. Keever.
Is there any more, any more discussion? Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
There we go. You have to hit it just the right way. Uh, my apologies. I would like to see the bulk rate stay as we suggested and just be looking at the residential rates in this discussion.
Counselor King?
Okay, so, um, based on the conversation here, then I'm gonna say that, uh, my motion is to amend, um, to reflect water rates as follows. Um, and the change will be not in the bulk water users, but will be for the residential. So, um, for the Huxley, Wimbourn, um, Equity and Mount Vernon co-ops, that the water rate be two dollars per cubic meter, as per our discussion. And the remainder of the water systems, um, move to three fifty. So what I've done is I've taken the, uh, four water systems that currently are at the one sixty-four and, according to our discussion, have moved them to the two-dollar rate and, um, amended the remainder of the systems to three fifty.
Okay, we did have a motion on the table before us, so you'd want to rescind the previous motion, Counselor King, and...
Okay, I'll rescind my previous and, and make this the actual motion, then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll wait for that to come up on screen and make sure that it is what you were intending. Is that your motion, Counselor King?
Okay, based on the conversation that we've had in this room, um, that reflects the conversation. And so, yes, that would be my motion.
Is there any discussion to that motion? Uh, Counselor Hugo?
Uh, Reeve Whitstock, in, in that, would that be, uh, no matter the total amount of water they use for residential, or would that be, uh, in Mike's accounting here, we have scenario A. If you use over a hundred cubes in the bi-monthly, it would be up to nine, it would, uh, rate would go to nine. So the residential would be unlimited amount of water that we have. This is just for clarification.
I think the intent of the motion was to proceed with the way it was written. In the summary of changes, am I correct, Counselor King?
Um, yes, to address Counselor Hugo's question, um, my understanding was that the excess of water use, which is determined to be over a hundred meters per billing period, that those, once they go over that hundred, um, meters cubed, they would then be paying the nine-dollar rate. So as long as you're using water for residential and you're staying below the hundred meters cubed in a billing period, then you will be paying the three fifty per meter cubed.
Very good, thank you.
So if Aqua Seven comes out with a new rate here yet this fall, are we gonna, and they come in and say three sixty, are we gonna jump right away or are we stuck with this three fifty for the next term?
When we get the change from the town of Drumheller, it'll be a percent, usually it's a percentage of what the water cost is going in, so, uh, it's not, my expectation is, is that it's not going to go above the three fifty rate. Is there any more discussion to the motion? I guess it's a, a motion, but amendment to our water consumption, or rates. Okay, if there's no more discussion to it, everybody's had their opportunity. We'll call the question. The amendment to the master rates is in front of you. Everybody understands where we're going with this? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Okay, we will, I guess we'll go in steps here. We'll, we'll move on to the riser fee.
So that was first reading of the bylaw.
Oh, okay. That was first reading to the bylaw. All the, okay. So I guess we'll... Okay, so I guess I'm, I, I screwed up there. It wasn't an amendment. It was first reading. So I'll redo the, I'll redo the motion. So first reading. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, before we go on to second reading, I have an issue with the riser fees. My understanding at the committee of the whole meeting was that the ten thousand dollar fee was to reflect the new systems that we might be putting in. I was not under the impression that it was to change the rates of the systems that have been, um, already set up. That's my understanding. Uh, what does council want? I would, I would like to keep the six thousand at six thousand for right now, and the ten thousand would be for the new system that would be coming on stream. I'm open to discussion on that.
Uh, Reeve, I, uh, I was thinking similar to you, other than that the ten thousand would be for any new residents or new developments that haven't been there at this time across the board, is how I was looking at it. So, yes, if you've already resided where those waters are, but if you come in and build, then it's ten thousand.
Okay, so you're talking, or we're talking, all water users that have water systems in front, well, the new riser will be ten thousand? Okay. Okay, I didn't understand it to be that way, but that's fine. Is there any other discussion to that?
I, I don't think it would hurt to, to be at ten thousand for anybody adding a new riser on, you know, I mean, what's already existing, you know, I mean, the old, what's there right now, even if somebody isn't hooked to it, he's paid the six thousand, but if he makes a new acreage and it was never put in there, uh, and there wouldn't be that many people that would be hit with that ten thousand dollar rate in the old ri- in the old writings.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just misunderstood, so that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with new risers being charged at ten instead of the six. Uh, is there any more discussion to the... Counselor Christie?
I guess my comment would be if you're building a new yard or upgrading your water with a well, you wouldn't do it for ten thousand. Like, you couldn't come close.
Oh, you're right. It's not gonna happen, and then there's, then there's no guarantee what kind of water or qual- quantity or quality of water either. Okay, so I'm willing to leave that one alone. Is there, is there any other discussion to any of, uh, any of the changes here?
Mr. Reeve, maybe just as a point of clarification, um, Mike, in the planning and development fees, um, when we talked about the class four major commercial industrial recreation, I know we've had some conversation around the, the costs, um, after the fact kind of thing, like legal and some of the other things that we've, um, encountered and had to pay. Um, and so, am I to assume that those will be built into the development contracts? That the, the language around the developer covering those costs for, um, legal action that results as a consequence of their development? That that'll be built into the development contract as opposed to set in the fee?
That, that would be my understanding as well. But it'd be on a, on a development, um, agreement, uh, situation rather than through the master rates, if that was to apply.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Reeve, would it be appropriate that we take a quick break while we fix this sound system?
I think we'll call a recess until we get these mics kind of working. So as soon as that happens... Don't screw my...
Mr. Reeve, members of council, just for some clarification on development agreements. Typically, in a development agreement, it would be very difficult for us to put in the agreement that all legal fees would be borne by the developer, specifically in the event that there becomes a legal issue between the developer and the county. It would be very difficult for a developer to say, "Well, we're going to take you to court." But at the same time, our legal fees would then be paid by the developer. So, that would be almost unenforceable. So, just a clarification of the previous question. We do have built into development agreements some discussion on engineering and those type of things. But legal fees are ours and legal fees are theirs. And rarely do the two ever come together.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, thank you. I just appreciate that clarification from Mr. Hogan. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more discussion to the master rates? Counselor King.
Yes, just one last clarification. So, the no-till drill rate is $20.
That would be correct. And the remanded motion to accept it should reflect that as well. Thank you.
Would someone like to have second reading? Counselor Christie?
I'll move second reading of Bylaws 1777.
And that would be with an amendment to the master rates.
With the amendment attached.
$20 per acre and $400 per day?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Seeing's none. I'll call the question. Okay, it's not quite up here yet. I'll wait for the motion to come up. Okay, is that what your motion reads, Counselor Christie?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor King.
So, Mr. Reeve, I'd make the motion that we give consideration to third reading. I don't know if we need as amended in there or not.
Shouldn't it be the same? Should? Okay, we have a motion to have consideration for third reading. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Is there flavor for someone to have moved third reading to the bylaw? Or master rates bylaw?
I shall move third reading of master rates bylaw 1777.
Thank you, Counselor Keever. We'll wait for that to come up. Okay, motion's been made for third reading for master rates bylaw 1777 with all previous amendments. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. While we're having these motions, we should have a motion to bring forward change in water rates from our suppliers. That usually happens in November. So, if we could have someone move to bring the master rates bylaw back if and at when such time as we have notification from our towns and villages or as we have notification from the towns that supply us the water, their rates changes.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, for councils, I'm not sure the other suppliers, Aqua Seven this year, will probably be a maximum of a 6% increase. So, that's, so probably looking around 15 to 18 cents a cube at the Aqua Seven level.
So, we would like a motion to bring back the master rates bylaw if and when there is a change to the water rates that we are being charged. Counselor McGee?
I shall move.
Okay, we'll wait for the motion to come up. I think that would be from our supplier. Suppliers, sorry. That's the way you'd like the motion to read, Counselor McGee?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none. We'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. That covers the bases, I do believe. We will go on to 6.2 in our agenda package, the reserve bids and conditions of sale. Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
And welcome, Caroline.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I do have, if it's okay, I do have Caroline Suberson here, Tax and Assessment Utilities Administrator, to help maybe field questions if should there be any from the council. She's intimately familiar with the properties as well. And she could be a valuable resource at the table here. That's okay.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, about once a year, some of the staff that council normally doesn't get to interact with come to council with things like today. Caroline does a fabulous job in our tax department, taxes on water billing. Flawless, smooth. We meet all the legal parameters. And I just want to point out to the council that we couldn't be happier with the work that Caroline does. And she looks after our tax department way beyond any expectations. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. I echo those comments as well. Certainly appreciative of her efforts. That's for darn sure. So, we'll get into the business at hand here. Agenda item 6.2 is the 2018 reserve bids and conditions of sale relating to properties being auctioned for the purposes of tax recovery. Administration is requesting council to review the 2018 tax sale properties and set reserve bids for public auction and to set conditions of sale as per the Municipal Government Act, Section 418, Sub 1. Each municipality must offer for sale at a public auction any parcel of land shown on its tax arrears list if the tax arrears are not paid. The landowner has the ability to pay the taxes in full or to enter into a three-year tax agreement at any time prior to 2:00 p.m. on the sale date as per Sub 4 of Section 418 MGA. The municipality may enter into an agreement with the owner of a parcel of land shown on its tax arrears list, providing for the payment of the tax arrears over a period not exceeding three years. And in the event, the parcel needs to be offered for sale under subsection 1 until (a) the agreement has expired or (b) the owner of the parcel breaches the agreement. The county has a tax agreement in place for the 2015 tax sale rate pair and two in place for the current tax sale. In order to continue the process, it is regulated that council set reserve bids as indicated in Section 419. The council must (a) for each parcel of land to be offered for sale at the public auction a reserve bid that is as close as reasonably possible to the market value of the parcel and (b) that all the conditions that apply to the sale. If the property does not sell at the public auction, the municipality becomes the owner. That becomes MGA Section 424. Properties that have a 2016 tax recovery notification placed on title and have remaining tax arrears will be offered for sale at the public auction. The tax sale date previously motioned by council at May 8, 2018 council meeting is held on Thursday, October 11 at 2:00 p.m. Neahill County Office. The properties that currently have tax arrears and meet parameters of public auction according to Municipal Government Act, Section 418, are as follows. Row 3226-3416, triple zero. That's the 2.2 acres southeast of 343226, known as Plan 8010154 Block 2. And we'll get into each of those properties as well. A little more specifically, as the council were reviewing the bids that are put forth. Row number 3223-3114000. 4.4 acres of southeast of 313223 west of the fourth, known as Plan 9710935 Block A. Row number 3226-3446400. Plan 6820GY, Block 8, Lots 6 and 7. Address 210 One Street, South Torrington. And lastly, four, Row 3025-1833, triple zero. That's 20.33 acres of Plan 7410042, Lot B, on 302065 Range Road 260. Administration has attached more detailed information and photos of the parcels for your review. The suggested reserve bids were based on the assessment and opinion of accurate assessment for current market value. And it is important that the county sell the property for the highest amount that the property may be acquired at auction and not lower than the reserve bid in order to provide a favorable sale of the parcel for the owner. If the property does not sell, the municipality may become the owner of that parcel. To date, the properties have been advertised in the Alberta Gazette and the Three Hills Capital according to the rules and regulations as set out in the MGA. Several letters and notices have been forwarded to the owners over the past two years advising them of the status of the taxes and the responsibilities they have regarding payment. Anyone with the interest registered on title have been notified of the tax sale properties articulated in the Municipal Government Act, Section 421.4. Not less than four weeks before this date of public auction, the municipality must send a copy of the advertisement to (a) the owner of each parcel of land to be offered for sale, (b) each person who has an interest in any parcel to be offered for sale that is evidenced by the caveat registered by the registrar, and (c) each encumbrance shown on the certificate of title for each parcel to be offered for sale. If at any time the tax arrears and costs are paid prior to the sale date or the owner enters into a tax agreement, Municipal Government Act, Section 418.4, the property will be pulled from the auction. So, the cost of the funding, each had a tax notification administration fee charged on it upon the registration of the caveat as per the master rates bylaw. And now, we'll get into some of the information regarding each of the properties. So, Row 3226-3416, triple zero. Plan 8010154, Block 2, to the 2.2 acres southeast of 343226. So, the suggested reserve bid is at $38,000. This property is located directly south of Torrington. It is vacant and assessed at a non-residential rate due to the current zoning. This property is owned Hamlet Industrial and is a decent size, so a number of developments could be considered. Since it is quite close to residential properties rezoning, it to another district could also be considered, either Hamlet Commercial or Hamlet Residential. In order to consolidate with an adjoining parcel of descriptive plan that has obtained approval from land titles would be a minimum requirement. So, you can see on the map, the subject property is So you can see on the map, the subject property is outlined in green, and it shows some of the, sort of the situational location as to where it is with some of the private lands that are surrounding it. Of course, it's right along the trail net property as indicated. The conditions of sales are important in this, as in it's sold as is. Current levy in the amount of $766 is to be paid by the purchaser. Purchaser is to pay for all transfer costs, and the full purchase price plus GST must be paid by certified check or cash by the end of the business, October 11, 2018. That's Thursday. The county will provide clear title except for those encumbrances that may be registered on title that are listed in the MGA Section 423.1. Second property in front of you is Row number 3223-3114, triple zero, Plan 9710935 Block A. It's the 4.4 acres southeast of 313223 west of the fourth, and the suggested reserve bid before you, $60,000. The background is such that the property is located just north of Three Hills, directly off of Highway 21. This property is zoned agricultural. However, the proximity to the rail would create issues for any purchaser. Guidelines for proximity to rail lines requires 300 feet for new development. They would be unable to obtain this on this parcel. Parcel is only 150 feet wide at the deepest end, and we'll show it on the map here. There may be an opportunity to allow something that has no human occupancy, but we would need to get comments from the rail company as well. Title registration include an easement for access and a restrictive covenant expiring 2023 that restricts the owner to sale, market, store, distribute, or handle bulk oil or petroleum products. In order to consolidate this with an adjoining parcel, a descriptive plan that has obtained approval from land titles would be the minimum requirement. So you can see some of the pictures in front of you of the property, and in front of you in the green as indicated, that's the subject parcel, and you can see it right next to the adjoining, adjacent railway, and it shows the geographic location approximately to other properties. So again, the conditions and terms of sale are sold as is. Current levy in the amount of $326.33 is to be paid by the purchaser. Purchaser to pay for all transfer costs. The full purchase price plus GST must be paid by certified check or cash by the end of business, October 11, 2018. The county will provide clear title except for those encumbrances that may be registered on title that are listed in the Municipal Government Act, Section 423.1.
Just break in for a second here, Mr. Morton. Could you just scroll down just a smidgen? The other way. Okay, right there. So that road allowance showing on that parallels the 21 and then parallels the tracks is illegal access to that properties?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, the title has a caveat for easement, for access. So they do have access to that parcel through the other.
Okay, great. Just checking. Run into issues before, so that's perfect. Thank you very much. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So the third property up is Row number 3226-3446400, Plan 6820GY Block 8, Lots 6 and 7 in the Hamlet of Torrington, and the suggested reserve bid on this one is $130,000. The background is such, the property is located at 210 First Street, South Torrington. The home, however, is occupied at this time. There are several registrations on title, including writs placed on title by the Canada Revenue Agency. These will have to be removed in order to provide clear title to the purchaser, and administration staff has had contact with them to review the matter. So you can see the home, pictures of the property. And then the map with the location, again, highlighted in green, and where the location is relative to its neighbors and so forth. The conditions and terms of the sale are sold as is, and the purchaser is to deal with the current tenants. The current levy in the amount of $707.36 is to be paid by the purchaser. Purchaser to pay for all transfer costs. The full purchase price plus GST must be paid by certified check or cash by the end of business day, October 11, 2018. The county will provide clear title except for those encumbrances that may be registered on title that are listed in the MGA Section 423.1. And Caroline just informed me that there is going to be a tax agreement potentially in place for this afternoon for that said property. So we are talking last-minute type of information. As my request for decision indicated, they still have time right until the witching hour, so to speak, on Thursday. Thank you for that information, Caroline. The last property before you is Row number 3025-1833, triple zero, the Plan 7410042 Lot B, the northwest of 183025 west of the fourth, and the suggested reserve bid at $575,000. The background is such that the property is located at 302065 Range Road 260 and contains 20.33 acres. There is a water riser and a local improvement payment included in the annual levy. The current owners are not using the potable water, but the home is occupied at this time. There are several restrictions on title, including a mortgage, and all parties that have an interest in the land have been notified of the tax sale. So there's a picture of the subject property, highlighted in green, and gives you a general idea of the location. And the next picture does show that it is inhabited with residents. So the conditions are sold as is. The purchaser is to deal with the current tenants. The current levy in the amount of $3,790.19 is to be paid by the purchaser. The purchaser to pay for all transfer costs, and the full purchase price plus GST must be paid by certified check or cash by end of business, October 11, 2018. The county will provide clear title except for those encumbrances that may be registered on title that are listed in the Municipal Government Act, Section 423.1.
I would just like to add that this property does have a signed tax agreement. I am just waiting for the banking information for the pre-authorized debit, so we wanted to include it just in case I don't get that in time, because that is part of the agreement, that they have to provide that.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to go on with the recommended actions, Mr. Morton?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Unless there's any further questions, we can certainly open that up upon, after my recommended action. So pursuant to Municipal Government Act, Part 10, Section 8, the council set the reserve bids for the properties listed for each of the appraisals, opinion of the value, and subject to the following conditions: Each property must not be sold for less than the reserve bid. The purchaser takes possession of the property as is. The purchaser must pay the 2018 levy immediately. Purchaser is to pay for all transfer costs, and the full purchase price must be paid by certified check or cash by the end of business day, Thursday, October 11, 2018, and the purchaser is to pay GST. And as per the recommended actions, the recommended action would be as such that council sets the reserve bids as follows, and I'll read the description. Row 3226-3416, triple zero, Plan 8010154 Block 2 be set at $38,000. Row 3223-3114, triple zero, Plan 970935 Block A be set at $60,000. Row 3226-3446400, Plan 6820GY Block 8, Lots 6 and 7 be set at $130,000. And lastly, Row 3025-1833000, Plan 7410042 Lot B at set at $575,000, with the following conditions for each of the properties. And I'll read those into the record. Each property must not be sold for less than the reserve bid. The purchaser takes possession of the property as is. The purchaser must pay the 2018 levy immediately. The purchaser is to pay for all transfer costs. The full purchase price must be paid by certified check or cash by end of business day, Thursday, October 11, 2018, and the purchaser is to pay the GST.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Are there any questions from council? So this can be taken care of up until the 11th of October, so there may be four, there may be one, there may be...
That is correct, Mr. Reeve. Yes, right up until the auction time on Thursday.
Okay, very good. Counselor King?
Again, maybe a bit of curiosity on my part, but also for clarification. What's the success rate normally of, one, people coming in and paying their tax levies, or two, if they don't do that, in terms of sale of these properties?
In my history here, it's fairly high that recovery is made, and such that we usually do receive the money up until that. It's very rare, in fact, that we actually take properties in tax sale that I've been here. There was an exception a couple years ago, but we, there was an opportunity that presented itself, and we ended up paying fair value for it. So, and that's requirement under the MGA, but that was a rare exception. Normally, people pay their taxes up until the last date.
Thank you for that clarification. What are council's wishes? Counselor McGee?
I'm going to make my motion in a very lazy way. I move that we do the, we set the reserve bids as printed in our package.
Very good. Okay, motion's been made to set the reserve bids with the conditions as printed in our screen. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's no discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And I think what we'll do is we'll recess. We've got a presentation coming up at 10, so we'll let that get set up. So thank you, and reconvene at 10. Okay. Okay, we will bring the meeting back to order. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late, but what we'll do is we'll introduce ourselves. And then if you can introduce yourselves and start any time after that, Una, starting from my right. Jim Hugo.
Debbie Penner.
Wade Christie.
Jerry Whitstock.
Ken King.
Glenn Keever.
Fay McGee.
And with us is our C A O, Al Hogan, and staff. If you can introduce yourselves and start whenever you're ready, then, who knows?
I think I had it turned on. Is my mic on now?
Yeah, you have to hold the button, unfortunately.
Thank you. First of all, I have to ask you to deal with a problem. You know, I was eighty-nine yesterday, was a good happy birthday, but somehow I forgot my hearing aids this morning. Is that part of being old? I don't know. So if I don't respond to you, please wave your hand, shout. Thank you again for having us. There. No. Thank you. You have to hold it?
Yeah.
Oh, my giddy. You've got it, okay. Last time we met with the members of the council, it was to report and review what was happening at the Wellness Center in Torrington. We presented the goals for the year for two thousand and eighteen. Application for community funding had been made to get the three projects started. Our application was not approved, and other ways had to be found to get our goal reached. Drawing from past experience, gathering from the power of purpose of our members, and inspired by the need to succeed, a way was found. In one of our projects, which was the little free libraries, a very generous donation from private people allowed us to buy all the lumber, and those libraries have been installed. And we were glad to have Mr. Christie and Mr. Keever come and cut the ribbon, symbolizing that we had completed that part. Even the greatest sources of the power comes in the form of encouragement. This is important for you to understand, for you to remember. Too often, the small, the value of the smaller groups and communities such as Torrington and Wimborne are not recognized. Larger projects, more costly efforts are the focus to the exclusion of the smaller groups who are the lifeline of their community. It only takes a minute or two to drive through Torrington. Is that right? Can you do it in two minutes? I think so, even at fifty, traveling through. But have you ever stopped to see what you may have missed as you drove through? A museum that draws tourists from all over the world. If you ever go to the museum, they have a huge map, and everyone who visits from a different place sticks a pin in. I don't think there's any more room. We have a library that fills the loss of the one when the school was closed. We have an arena that meets the needs of more than the vital sports. In the arena, we have the library. Seniors outreach meets once a month, once a week. We have a craft, weight loss, blood pressure clinic in that arena. It's used for many things. We have a community center that brings important social events together, and we have a very vibrant seniors center that hosts information and centers and does different social activities. Crib, crib is Wednesday afternoon if you're free. Monday morning is coffee time if you're free, and it's free. So, you're welcome to that. A wellness center that provides support for clinics and other service providers. We have foot care in there. We have a blood pressure clinic, and the adult, excuse me, what is it? The Neehill Adult Centers, they come in with their various programs like one-on-one computer and their children program. I'm not here to scold you. I'm here to remind you of who you are and how important your endeavors as those in authority are to us. We've been grown, shown great encouragement by two members from this council who care for our community. They've come to our celebrations, even though there are only twenty of us. They've taken the opportunity to visit with people in a social setting, and each has more call in their times than they can handle, but they made the effort, and we were honored. We need the rest of you, too. Do you brag about the efforts of the residents of the small groups of Neehill County? Do you consider us a feather in your cap? Instead of talking about the weather when you go to your large meetings, talk about us, what's happening in the small communities in Neehill County. Today, we brought you a token of one of the completed goals for two thousand and eighteen. Every page of the book shows the handprint of one of your constituents. Every dishcloth is evidence of the time invested by one person. We're all proud of the people who made this team effort succeed. As you study the needs of Neehill County, as you plan the budget, send out your scouts to find the needed support that only you can give. We crochet dishcloths. That's our part. You supply money to repair and maintain. That's your part. Give us the tools, and we'll do the work that you can't do. Partners, teamwork. Thank you. We're just going to pass out these gifts to you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Una. We are proud that we are helping to enhance the Rongore Memorial Arena with, in our last budget, we have done, or we have allotted five hundred thousand, so we're hoping that the building can be enhanced, and your participation there will be at a better, better place. And thank you so much for your gift. Look forward to going through this.
There's lots of secrets about Torrington in it, and even you can learn how to do a dishcloth.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to our next agenda item, eight point one, which is the regional, Neehill Regional F C S S. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Eight point one is indeed the two thousand nineteen Neehill Regional F C S S budget and allocations. Administration received the F C S S two thousand nineteen budget. Under the Neehill Regional F C S S agreement, it states that the board shall prepare the annual budget and provide a copy to each participating municipality for review and approval. The Neehill Regional Board approved at their September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen meeting to increase the municipal requisition by five percent in two thousand and nineteen. The last requisition increase was in two thousand and fifteen. Neehill County's contribution in two thousand and eighteen was forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and will be forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars in two thousand and nineteen, should council approve. It, the cost and source funding would be in the two thousand and nineteen operating budget. The attachments, you can read the F C S S request letter, and the recommended action is that council approve the funding. Council options are to accept the F C S S budget and allocations, or to receive as information.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes? Any discussion?
Mr. Reeve, I think it goes without saying that the F C S S in Neehill and our partnership with the other communities, we are getting good value for what they are doing. And the individuals who work in the programs definitely have provided good value. So it'd be my motion that we approve the Neehill Regional Family and Community Support Services two thousand and nineteen budget, an allocation request presented to council.
Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor McGee.
I just wanted to say I agree with Deputy Reeve King. I full-heartedly believe in the F C S S program, being a huge bang for the R A R B and taking, making our community a great place.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. We have a motion before us. If there's no more discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we will go on to eight point two, F C S S Tenth Annual Volunteer Forum. Again, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and members of council. An invitation has been received from the Neehill Regional Family and Community Support Services to attend the Tenth Annual Volunteer Forum. The forum is scheduled for November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, at five P M. at the Bethel Evangelical Missionary Church in Three Hills. The cost and source funding would be out of the two thousand and eighteen operating budget. You can see the attachments from the F C, or the F C S S invitation is attached, and the recommended actions that council authorize attendance to the event. Your options are to council authorize attendance to all of council that can attend, or the council authorize attendance to F C S S committee members, or to receive as information.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Counselor Penner.
I would move that council authorize whoever council members would like to attend.
Okay, thank you. So the motion's been made to authorize any or all council to attend if they have the time and are willing. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. Just a note, make sure that you let someone from the office know that by October thirty-first, your attendance plans. We will now go on to eight point three, Regional Assessment Review Board. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is a bylaw seventeen seventy-eight, Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw. At the July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting, Jackie Kirlo from the Central Alberta Regional Assessment Review Board presented to council. The Central Alberta Review Board provides experienced, trained board members and additional quality assurance and efficiency through its clerks. The R A R B services over twenty municipalities in Central Alberta. To become a member municipality within the R A R B, Neehill County is required to pass the attached bylaw that is mirror image to the City of Red Years bylaw, and also enter into a service agreement. Bylaw seventeen seventy-eight is attached for your review and consideration. The cost to be part of the R A R B is two thousand dollars per year. This amount covers the costs related to training, both board and clerk. If a complaint proceeds to hearing, the costs incurred are billed to the municipality for recovery only. The estimated cost to have two board members trained and a clerk training currently costs us around three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars every three years. The link to the strategic plan is the Think and Act Regionally, and the attachments are bylaw seventeen seventy-eight, and the July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen Central Alberta Regional Assessment Review Board. Recommended action is that council give three, all three readings to the bylaw, and options are to approve the bylaw, amend the bylaw, or receive as information.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What are council's wishes? Counselor King.
Again, just a point of clarification, and Al, if you could just help me understand that second portion, cost and source of funding. Is that saying that currently, if we were to estimate what we're spending currently to have two board members trained and clerk training is three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars every three years? And that if we joined R A R B, we would be paying two thousand dollars per year?
Mr. Reeve, members of council, that is correct. The only variable that's in there that is difficult to define is that, that is, our cost of a little over three thousand every three years, a thousand dollars a year for training does not include our clerk's time in the office that we spend actually preparing on the tax appeals. So that's, that's not built in because it's very difficult to, to take our clerk's time and figure out what portion of, of her position on a daily, monthly, annual basis is actually used towards it. So that is a pure training number, just the cost of sending, sending the board members and the clerk out for training on a triennial basis.
So just as a follow-up, then, so if we join the R A R B, then we would no longer have a clerk here doing that work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And, and in discussion, if I might add, in discussion with the Central, the Assessment Review Board, we're, the, there is some movement over the next few years towards also including S D A B. This, this, this will be, become a, the, the long-term vision is for this to become a much more encompassing, both the subdivision and appeal board and assessment review. It's going to take a few years to get there, but that is a long-term goal.
Thank you for the additional information. What are council's wishes? Counselor Penner.
I think it's valuable as a, going as a group, and that I would move first reading of bylaw seventeen seventy-eight for the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw to establish a regional assessment review board.
Okay, first reading has been brought forward. Is there any discussion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. This is for first reading of bylaw seventeen seventy-eight as printed in our package. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Would somebody like to make second reading?
I'll move second reading of bylaw seventeen seventy-eight.
All right, we've had second reading moved. Counselor Keever, all those in favor? And that is carried. We could have consideration for third. Counselor Christie?
I'll move consideration for third reading.
Okay, motion's been made for consideration of third reading. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Counselor King.
I would move third reading of bylaw 1778, the Regional Assessment Review Board bylaw.
Okay, third reading has been moved. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, we will now move on to eight point four, Three Hills Arts Academy. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Eight point four is regarding the Three Hills Arts Academy Night on Broadway, 25 Years of Magic. At the February 13th, 2018 council meeting, council made the following motion. Counselor Christie moved the council donate $1,000 per year for the next four years, beginning in the 2018 budget year, to the Three Hills Arts Academy. As a corporate sponsor, we receive four complimentary tickets to each of their shows this year. Night on Broadway, 25 Years of Magic will be playing October 25th, 26th, and 27th. In the past, when we receive free complimentary tickets, we typically donate them back to the organizers for resale. Cost and source funding out of the 2018 operating budget. The link to the strategic plan is to think and act regionally. The attachment, you can see the request email from the executive director, Mrs. Sept. And the recommended action is that council donate the tickets back to the organizer. However, your options are to donate the tickets back. Council donates the tickets to a different organization. Council uses the tickets and authorizes attendance or receives for information.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. We have some options. What are council's wishes? Sorry, Counselor McGee.
I move to donate the four complimentary tickets back to the Three Hills Arts Academy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion? Counselor King.
And that, just again, a clarification. I noticed in the letter from them that it talks about room for promotion of Neill County within their brochure, so I assume that we are going to go forward with that as well.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion before us. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. We will move on to disposition of delegation business. Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, just some background information regarding Neill Area Wellness Center. Previously, in November, September 26th, 2017, Mrs. Erickson provided council with an update of the Neill Area Wellness Center. There had been previously a $1,500 per year donation that Neill contributed to the program that ended in 2017 and the Neill Regional Wellness Center at that time was requesting further support. On, and at that meeting, council approved the one-time donation of $1,000. So far in 2018, there has been no monies by council approved to provide from Neill County to the Neill Area Wellness Center.
Thank you for the additional information. What are council's wishes?
Have they applied for any money in the next round of community grants?
Mr. Reeve, members of council, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting the head shake from, from my boss over there. I don't believe so.
They have not, but the community grant is for, it's not for operational.
We're putting half a million or better into the Ron Gore Memorial Arena here in the next year or so. We're hoping that some of that money can be used to enhance the facilities there and make maybe their programs run a little smoother. That's my only comments to it.
I'll move that we take the delegation present, presentation as information.
Okay, motion's been made to move as information. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And we will now go on to council and committee reports. Neill Regional Doctor Recruitment and Retention Committee, I have presented the package to the board, or to the council here. There was discussion on the new doctor contract at the last meeting, which was held on Wednesday, October the 3rd. And we have gone back to having it as a recruitment bonus. Twenty-five thousand paid in two blocks, just for information. And there is some other stuff that came up at the meeting, but it was kind of thought we better keep it confidential for a little bit yet before any announcements made in And I also attended the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission meeting. The only thing that's, has changed on it is we are now, all of our renewal for manager operations reservoir and, trying to remember the fourth one, but regardless, oh, our secretary, they are all now set to renew at the same time. And as far as, and, yeah, and we've also got an issue with one of our big 500 horse pumps. It's going to be fixed. We do have money in the budget to repair it. And there was a bylaw change, and maybe Mr. Hogan, if you would want to refer to that.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. We had a bit of a rough 2018 at Aqua Seven in terms of equipment. We had two pumps go. Those 500 horse pumps are not cheap. I think so far this year, we're probably stink up to about a hundred thousand dollars in, in pumps alone. But in any event, everything is, everything is running and working and everything is good and overs, because the commission had made some changes to its financial structure a couple of years ago and how we charge, there was actually money in a, in a reserve account to cover those things, so it'll have no impact on, on water rates most likely going ahead. There was, however, a fairly significant change to the bylaw. And that had to do with how municipalities enter and leave Aqua Seven. Aqua Seven currently is based on, with the, with the eight municipalities that are involved in it, are based on an allocation percentage which eventually equals 100%. For example, Neill County is the largest allocation to, to Aqua Seven at 36.24%. So any, for example, there's 2.5 million cubes of water that we are contracted that we could have out of the Drumheller Water Treatment Plant, 36.24% of that water could be Neill County's to meet our allocation. Rocky View is the next at 18.76, Yirrkana at 17%, and then it goes down the list from there till we finally hit 100% number. So what ends up happening, we didn't have a procedure in the past to how new municipalities or another municipality would join the commission. And what the commission decided to do was to say that any new municipality who would like to join, after, once they apply, has to figure out where they're getting their allocation from. So for example, they could, they could carve out a deal with the village of Acme or Bysaker or Yirrkana to buy percentage points of theirs, and as long as the, as long as the municipality agrees, then that percentage could go to the new municipality. As, as you might expect, we don't use 36%. I, I think we're about seven or eight percent of our total. We have 25, 26, 27% left over in our own allocation. So any, so one of the changes that was made was any new member will be required to pay the current commission member that is losing allocation, the value of the allocation they are transferring, plus additional amount equal to two times the new member's estimated annual usage, which will be paid to the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission. So for example, if municipality XYZ wanted to join Aqua Seven and another member municipality had, say, 5% available that they were prepared to sell, they would sell it at the current valuation. Aqua Seven is currently valued around $25 million, so 5% of that would be, whatever 5% of 25 million is. And then whatever the new municipality's estimated usage would be, there would be a required two times that payment to be made to that, to Aqua Seven, plus the, the actual percentage allocation gets paid to the municipality that's losing its allocation. Once you've lost your allocation, you, it's lost. So that's a, that's a decision that municipality would have to make. The other change that was significant is when a municipality leaves Aqua Seven. Until, until this bylaw came in, there was no penalty or there was no, there was no discouragement for, for pulling the pin and walking away from Aqua Seven. So now, the new bylaw requires that commission members wishing to leave the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission shall give a 12 months written notice of their intent to leave. Upon leaving the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission, all allocation associated with the departing commission member becomes the property of the commission, and such allocation may be transferred to current valuation to any other commission member or held for future use. So for example, if, again, if one of the municipalities left and they had a 10% allocation, that allocation would come to the commission. And if another municipality inside the commission wanted extra allocation, they could then purchase that from the commission at current valuations. Or the commission could just hold on to it in the event that we had percentages that we'd like to sell to potentially new customer or new municipality. And again, upon departure from Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission, the departing municipality will be required to pay to the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission a payment two times the value of their allocation. So they're not only giving up their, their allocation, they're also paying us two times the value of it. So if you have 5% and 5% of 25 million, you'd end up having to write a check to Aqua Seven for two, for, for two times your percentage. It's a bit of an incentive to stay in Aqua Seven and not leave, but if you do decide you want to leave, that's the, so those are, and there is a definition of allocations, or 8.98, allocations are valued as a percentage of the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission total commission value. I think currently we're at 24, 25 million. I'd have to pull up the exact numbers. So those were fairly significant changes. The other, the other change that was made is that in certain circumstances, the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission may consider an in-kind payment to the commission in lieu of the two times annual usage. This consideration is solely at the discretion of the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission. That would be in the case that maybe a municipality who wanted to join the commission had an asset they would like to transfer to the, to the, to the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission. So, so, so those are fairly significant changes to the bylaw, kind of impacting entering and, and leaving. So if you have any questions, feel free, but that's just kind of a synopsis of the major changes.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is there any questions? Okay, and then we have our Drumheller Solid Waste.
Just to update you a little bit, the, the county should have got a letter a little while ago, just a guideline. It went to all municipalities, even the little ones that don't actually have dumpsters, just a general what needs to be done and not done. And I represented the drum solid waste at our conference, and they're moving towards extended producer responsibilities, which means the supplier takes the responsibility right through. You used to be able to say cradle to grave, but now they want to say cradle to new product. So that's dealing with everything to do with that product. It's going to take a little while. Alberta is the only province not adopting the EPR as yet in Canada. It could come. Some things they're trying to push is that the packaging has a very high percentage of recyclables in it, for us to all look for that. We talked about the China sword. Yeah, it was pretty harsh, but maybe it was a good thing in a way. We have to deal with our recyclables, the plastics in particular, and we can say no to China to some of their plastics. So it may be a good thing to come out of that. We're pushing towards it, the cities need to deal with their garbage through bylaws and policies. They should only sell, or the businesses compostable, recyclable, and reusable, and so that us in rural areas don't have to deal with the city garbage that they truck out here. They have a new incentive for four hours now, not three hours, so reduce, reuse, recycle, and recover or refurbish. So it's kind of going back to the old days where if you had a piece of furniture that was, the top was scratched, but the legs are okay, or vice versa, they would like you to leave it so that somebody else has an opportunity to refurbish it with a debt, with a timeline on it. The goal is by 2030, which I don't think will happen, that landfills will be obsolete and 100% of plastic will be reusable. And they're, and one way they're dealing with that is they're bringing back water fountains. Water fountains were taken out of most towns, communities, villages, and they're bringing them back in to try and save on the plastic side. But yeah, it was, we had some speakers from all over the world and how they're doing it, and circular economies are the way it's going, where they're using, we have to think that wastes, it's not waste, but it's a, a resource. So they're using it somewhere to produce energy. So, and our society is going to pay as you throw, so with garbage.
So I take it the Drumheller Waste is encouraging scavenging?
It's not a Drumheller Waste. It said that, it was just the Recycling Council of Canada. That's what they're trying to bring back.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions? Counselor King.
Just a comment, what's the Drumheller Waste going to do about overfeeding of seagulls? I noticed in the report there, there insatiable appetites of the seagulls.
Correct, and it's up to the employees to make sure that that's covered quickly or spread out. So if it's in one area, they, or they gorged, so, and that's what happens. And migratory birds are protected, so we have to try to save all of them.
Seagulls really are not that much different than people. They don't know when to stop either, eh?
Was actually something good to eat in there? Clarification. Okay, are there any questions to do with the council committee reports? If not, could use a motion to receive for information. Counselor McGee.
I so move.
Okay, motion's been made to receive for information. Any, any questions? Any extra debates? Don't, seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Any questions? Mr. Reeve. Counselor King.
I would make the motion that we receive the council follow-up action list for information. for information.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried, which I do believe brings us to the end of our agenda. There is nothing for in camera. Does anyone have anything for in camera? Okay, I will adjourn at ten forty-one. Thank you.